All right, well, we're welcoming Katrina Pullman here today to join us for our Courage Over Comfort. So welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out to our neck of the woods.
Yes, absolutely.
Taking a break from your job, your normal day to day business here for the one day. You guys have been off for a little while. So tell us who you are and what you do.
Okay, I'm Katrina Pullman. I own Aaron Sandy Trampoline Park in Rochester. I am also running for city council currently, so a new venture. And on top of it, we have another new small business venture that's gonna open here soon too.
Another one in like full business in the area or?
Way smaller scale than air insanity, but we're adding, um, we're gonna start doing coffee trailers. So Do North Coffee Company is gonna, its first location is gonna be right in front of Aaron Sandy.
Yeah, perfect. That's so exciting. So how long ago did you open Air Insanity?
It has been two years now.
Wow, I can't believe it's been two years. I know there was a big anticipation. I remember doing an article about it when I was working for the radio station and just thinking, wow, I cannot wait to have some place for kids to expel energy.
Yes, I know, I know. It was a, we spent almost three years researching and, and trying to come up with a plan and, and looking at things and then trying to find a building and yeah, when we finally got to the point to open, it was, it was exciting.
That's so crazy. So how long did you think about this idea or what sparked the idea to open a trampoline park? I mean, there's obviously liabilities that you think about too.
Um, it's hard to truly remember what started it. I don't even remember. Um, so my husband's from Utah originally. And that's where a lot of trampoline parks started. And so we would go home or go back to Utah to see his family. We'd always go to the trampoline parks when we were there. Um, and it kinda started as we were moving back home because we were starting our family. We were coming back to Minnesota anyways. And then we said Minnesota needs one of these and one thing led to another and we started looking into it. And then, yeah, we ended up making probably a forty-two page business plan and started looking for investors and started from the ground.
So what's your background that you were like, I'm gonna come up with a business plan and make all of this happen? Did either of you have a background in business or how did you even decide to start that?
Yeah. So my background is actually finance and marketing. So I've been in banking since I was probably eighteen. So I started actually downtown Rochester at the little associated bank. When I was eighteen as a part-time teller. And now, like since then, I guess I've done just about every role in banking. So I am a licensed mortgage loan officer. I was a licensed business banker with Wells Fargo for four years. I've done investments. I've done a little bit of everything now, personal banking, teller.
Yeah. So would you say that's probably a pretty good asset to, uh, opening a business?
Yeah, yep, it is. And then, um, I actually spent a little bit of time in North Carolina. So I lived there for seven years. Um, and I worked kind of with NASCAR and the NASCAR teams and raising funds for an NASCAR team. And that's kinda where I started.
Certain team or as a part of NASCAR or?
Um, kind of a mix. So I've worked for the teams more than with NASCAR. So, yeah.
Did you get to hang out with them or like?
Yes, I know. There are a lot of the drivers are my friends.
What a cool like opportunity. How'd you get into that from the banking side of things?
That one is a past relationship. So I was married once, divorced, remarried. And so, um, my first husband was a race car driver.
Okay, gotcha.
So that's what brought me there.
Lots of exciting stuff. So when you guys embarked on this journey to start a trampoline, you said it took three years to get everything from idea to, I guess, opening. Does that sound about right? What were some like the biggest like struggles or things that you had to walk through and like dealing with all that? I know that there's a lot. I actually looked not seriously, but when, um, I think it was like on a Shark Tank show or something like that just came up. I'm like, I wonder what that would be like to, you know, have a trampoline park and holy insurance money.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It's, there's a lot more that goes into it than I think some people realize, especially getting started. Gosh, we, there are so many things that happen, so many obstacles. So many unknowns that we, you know, just leaping into that business world, um, trying to negotiate lease contracts. There's a lot of good and bad people. And so you, you learn fast. Um, you'll hear it's just business a lot. And that was probably the hardest thing to, to get through, but.
Did you get into like, you know, a slump or really like just up against some things that you thought that you might not get through?
We actually signed the lease on our building. Um, it was a ye- year and a half that we spent looking for buildings in Rochester. We signed the lease and the, um, the people that owned the building, there was actually three owners. Well, that exact same day, they signed a lease with another person. And so we actually lost our building. And so, um, the building that we were going into, it's actually the building we're in right now.
Sure.
Um, but we lost that lease to a school. Because they didn't believe a trampoline park was viable enough. It didn't, I think it was just the, the concept of a trampoline park, getting people to understand what we were trying to do. Um, it's such a new concept. And a lot of, um, businessmen and people in the area had no idea what it was. Had never heard of it unless you had kids or families and had been up to the cities. No one knew what we were talking about. No one knew what we were trying to do. Um, so that was a huge challenge. I carried pictures on my phone of, no, this is what, this is what it looks like. This is what we're trying to do.
Crazy that that would be, you know, met with such like.
Lots, lots. Um, and so they end up giving the building to the school. They thought it was the better choice.
Sure.
Um, and so we were devastated because there wasn't another building. And so we started reaching out, looking at options to build a whole new building, which is a way bigger project than what we were capable of doing. And so we kept looking. Another whole year had passed of looking and then the school actually didn't get enough people signed up or have enough, um, interest. And they ended up backing out.
Interesting.
And then the owners reached back out to us. And we had to redo and sit down and go through the whole contract all over again and finally come to an agreement and.
So what were you guys doing this whole time? Like in between, obviously you're not spending all day, every day looking for that. What did, I mean, were you working? I think you were at home.
Um, we were both working. Yep. Um, I was actually working, um, in compliance. Um, so auditing compliance was probably my last in the banking industry. Where I was before. So I worked in Fountain at the bank in Fountain. And my husband worked for Two-E Furniture. So he is a construction engineer by trade. He still, he still goes there. Um, he loves working with the guys there. So he still
That's great.
Heads down there and he does more like three D drawing and architectural drawing and things like that. So.
So did he design the park?
Yes, one hundred percent. Actually, he did. So that's one of the crazy parts too is, um, part of our negotiating, we actually, he GC'd the entire project. So he did all of the work.
That's amazing.
Everything.
While still working.
Yep, while still working. It was a lot of midnight to you know, two in the morning. We were at the park and then we'd head home and be back there again. So we put in forty hours easily on a weekend.
Wow. And how long you did that kind of work for? How long did it take once you guys got that building to opening?
So, um, we pushed it really hard just because everybody said it couldn't be done. So, um, and there was talk of another trampoline park coming into town right after we got the okay. And it was just like not again. And we had just started and we're just, um, excited to push through. So we pushed even harder. So we started, um, and finished in five months. The entire, um, we ripped everything out of the building and brought it down to absolute scratch. Yep. Yep. So all the HVC, all the ceiling, everything we ripped out, repainted everything. We actually, um, brought in, um, Deco's excavation team too, because we wanted to dig down the whole park to create a more open inviting atmosphere. We're one of only maybe five parks in the entire world that are dug down. Cause it's a very hard process. So yeah, we ended up bringing in equipment and digging out the entire floor of the trampoline park.
Never really would have thought of. Through that now that you say that I've been to other parks where you have to, you know, step up into the park. Yeah.
Yep. Everything's usually built up. It's not built down.
That's unique. So what made you go with instead of franchising, you know, like go with creating your entire park and whole concept by yourself?
We looked at it, um, because it is, you know, obviously the easier way to go because they kinda give you all your marketing. They, everything's already laid out for you to move forward. But every one that we went to was so restricted. You had to have the certain colors and we just didn't like the colors of all of them. I know it was, he walked in and it just wasn't the atmosphere we wanted. A lot of them were just trampoline parks and we wanted to add more. We wanted to be more than just trampolines. Like, like our Nerf zone that we have, we wouldn't have been able to have that if we would have franchised. The laser maze and things like that. The ninja courses. Yeah. Not unless it was part of the franchise platform and it wasn't yet. It's starting to be now. Um, but it wasn't then. So.
Good foresight there.
Yeah, we traveled to a lot of trade shows and learned about different things and we wanted new fun stuff and and so that's why we created it.
I love that. So you guys are both pretty driven. I mean, where does that come from? I mean, most people, you know, aren't willing to do so much extra work, you know? What does that drive look like for you besides rushing to beat someone else potentially?
Yeah, I don't really know where it started from, to be honest. Like, cause now I feel like we're even more driven today than we ever were. Once we started and we felt like we were doing something right and we were excited about it and excited about what we could do. And then to see it all come to life from your piece of paper to actually, hey, we built this and people love it. We love seeing smiling faces and ever since then, it's been like, oh, what are we gonna do next?
I think you guys, yeah, have done a great job at, you know, creating different environments and catering to different types of groups. Talk about, you know, obviously this recent season was like a huge hit. You know, you guys were I would assume ramping up, you know, momentum's building, you're coming on to spring break time. You know, what was your first reaction to all of this starting to change and what was your guys' you know, first like order of business?
Oh gosh, everything's, I feel like this year, if I could just fast forward and go to twenty twenty-one, I would be so excited. Cause we just, this year has just been a whirlwind. And I talked to other business owners. I've, I've reached out to people or people who have came into the park since we've opened. And it's insane, like the amount of emotions that every single person has gone through. I can't even.
Like seven stages of grief. Like that's what I've been like comparing it to. Cause you know, for anyone that had a change, which we all did to some extent, it looks different for everyone. But there was times you were like, I can't get through this. There was times that you were okay. There was times that you were exhausted and or in denial, you know, like all seven stages I think have been hit at some point. What was, what was the hardest part for you?
The unknown. I think that's what drove me the craziest through the last three months. Is definitely, you know, everyone would say, oh, you get to spend time with your family and you never, you know, did that. And it's like, yeah.
That's fine for the first couple of weeks. Yeah.
But for us, it was just, you know, you didn't know if next week you were gonna be allowed to open. So you had to be ready. And then it was, oh, well, in two more weeks, we might be able to open. So we need to be ready. And then it was, oh, two more weeks, we might be able to open. So you gotta get ready. So there was just never actually time to relax. You were always stressed. You were always wondering. You were always worrying. And then you know, time passed and time passed and you're like, oh, gosh, when are we, are we ever gonna open, you know, or when are we gonna be allowed to do anything like? We don't have any more money. How are we gonna survive?
Yeah. I mean, I definitely think there's, you know, two things that you guys are handling. One, your own family. You guys both work, you know, with the park, you know, primarily, you know, for a lot of what you do. Not having that financial stability. I mean, as your main source of income, I mean, that's a huge hit, I think for any family.
I think the hardest part too is it, you know, and a lot of people didn't look at it this way. If you didn't own a business, you know, you didn't necessarily see it was just that all your bills are still there. You know, you still have insurance. You still have rent. You still have utilities. You still have you know, you couldn't just turn off all the coolers and let all your food go bad. So you had to pay electric bills. Still taxes that were due, sales tax. All of a sudden bills started coming in and it was like I can't even work. Pay all this, you know, and you can't even operate and you're not, you're not allowed to operate. So it was like, you're just staring at it and yeah, it was rough.
What, how did you, you know, like work through, I mean, just that piece of it as your own family, as, you know, business owner, like, okay, I gotta stay afloat. Like, what do you keep telling yourself and how do you get through like day to day? You know, I feel like a lot of people and clearly, you know, there's a lot of businesses that have closed that, you know, they had to give up or they felt like they needed to give up, you know? How did you keep going?
Honestly, just day by day. I don't even know. I think you just kinda, kinda turn into, I, I guess it's a lot like when you have a child, you kinda just turn into a zombie for months and you just somehow keep going, even though you don't even really know how you made it through. It's, I feel like that's where I've been.
Right. Cause eventually it'll be over, like in your head, you know, I, you keep telling yourself the same thing.
Yep, eventually.
Like leading a team, you know, people that you have employed that are also now in the same situation with their family, but trying to keep, you know, them still engaged with the company and what's to come. And, you know, I think leadership was a big thing that showed up or didn't show up during this time. You know, what did that look like for you guys and how did you handle that?
That was definitely hard. Um, we did keep our managers on, um, during all of it. And so finding things for all of us to do. We started creating TikToks at the park. It was like, oh, what are we gonna do today? Well, let's make a fun video and spend half our day doing that because we have nothing else to do. We redesigned the whole park. We repainted and, and just tried to, to do things just to keep our minds busy. More than anything. And then even our staff that were at home that, um, couldn't come in, most of them are high school, college students. So we tried to create just fun online little activities with everybody just to keep everyone engaged. So we, we had this giant change jar that we collect at the park for people who leave behind random change. And so we threw it out there. Whoever could guess the amount in the change jar, got all the change. And we just did fun little games like that with everybody and just.
That's so important. Cause I think people definitely had a choice, you know, during that time, like to let everyone fun for themselves to you know, take a step back. I was joking a little bit about this TikTok thing and how, you know, the people that didn't have to work, again, no judgment or, you know, disrespect to anyone that wasn't working during that time. Cause I know there's a lot of other things to do with that. But, you know, you had the people that are like day drinking and having, you know, making the most of what they have. And you're like, I'm still working, but now I'm supposed to be a teacher. You know, like what's happening right now? But I think everyone, you know, had to find ways to like keep engaged and TikTok apparently worked for a lot of people.
I've seen a lot of people go to TikTok. Yeah. Yeah, I know. I think it was interesting, hard, difficult, exhausting at times for everyone. I don't think the people who are working were exhausted because they were being overworked because of furloughs. The people who weren't working were stressed because they weren't working or at home with kids all day, which is stressful enough. Um, so many unknowns too. I mean, gosh, you look at Facebook or social media and it was like all over the place on what was right, what was wrong. So it's just confusing, um, to know even as a business owner, what we're supposed to do, how we should open, how we shouldn't, you know, it was.
Do you have like someone that you look to with that? I mean, as trampoline park and nobody else in the area? I mean, you guys are kind of on your own to make decisions or do you have some guidance?
Um, we are on our own to make decisions, but we're a part of a trampoline park association. And so, you know, we, we contacted them. Because we started a trampoline park on our own, we've actually helped, um, another couple that we met, open a trampoline park in Wisconsin. And they've become really good friends of ours too. So we communicate, my husband and, and them communicate back and forth. Almost every day as we work through all of this. So it's just, you know, talking to other people that have parks and we all kind of we're, we are a small world. Um, and we all know each other pretty well because we get together, um, for different events and trade shows and things too. So yeah, we've just been talking to each other and trying to figure it out.
Yeah, one step at a time. What's the sentiment like now? I mean, how are you feeling about what you've experienced or seen people like in the park doing or just being able to transition back? Do you look at your business differently? Would you make any other different decisions?
I don't think so. I think, I mean, the one thing I've noticed and that I really realized is that people really didn't understand how much we did for the health and safety side prior to COVID. I think that's the biggest thing. We, you know, we never advertised what we did as for cleaning and things like that. But everything that we're doing today, we did prior.
That's really good to know.
Yep, time for a break. We'll be right back. And now, back to the episode.
But we're a children's facility. And so I guess I just assumed that it was known that we clean daily. But it wasn't. I learned that. A lot of people were like, oh, you have a fogger. Well, I didn't know that. It's like, well, we've always had that because you know, there's places that are hard to clean. There's a lot of things that kids get sick from and people come into the park and you just don't know. And well, my child runs, he basically lives there. So of course I wanna clean park for, for him. If nothing else. So, yeah, so that, that's the, the biggest thing that I noticed.
Anything changed about like your business that you guys decided to do differently?
Not too much. Um, you know, we've tried to, to add different things. We've tried to look at stuff. We're actually looking at, um, the possibility of adding an outdoor area to our park. We just started kind of looking into that and trying to add, we have a whole side parking lot that isn't used. And so we're trying to figure out what we can do to use that space.
That's awesome.
Inside, not as much. Um, we updated all of our birthday party rooms and came up with a new membership program and things like that too, to make it easier for families to come and not so expensive. So we're gonna launch that in the next couple of weeks.
That's exciting. So you guys have been busy. I mean, really like, you know, making a lot of just changes and adaptations. Like what would you give for advice for people that are still like, you know, stuck? Cause I think, you know, while people are open, a lot of people, as you know, have restrictions or you know, have been impacted so severely that they're having trouble getting going again, you know? Where do you start? What do you do?
I think reaching out, reach out to other people that are, I mean, the one thing that I've learned the most is that even people that you think are your competitors are your friends. And so many people reached out to me like with a, what are, what are you gonna do? What are you doing? How are we gonna get through this? When are you closing? When are you opening? Just trying to help each other and trying to get answers themselves. And I think if you just call each other, talk to your neighbors, talk to the people that are open next to you. Find out how they did what they did, why they're doing what they're doing. Maybe they'll give you ideas, comfort, I think, more than anything.
That's a great point.
Yeah, cause that's helped me for sure.
Yeah. No one else knows unless you look out there. I think everyone thinks that they're alone, you know, and all this. And I think, you know, and anything that goes on with people that they always feel alone, like they're the only ones that are experiencing this problem.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I felt like I was a crazy woman, you know, with all the emotions I've gone through and ups and downs and everything. And the more I talked to other business owners. My God, you know, how'd you get through this? What, what's happening there? I realized slowly that we all went through the same emotions. Every single person has. They excited to finally be open, the, you know, what do we do next?
For sure.
I think just ask, just talk to people, call a few.
Like, and you know, actively, and I think that's the same thing. I think I've thing that bothers me these days is that people just like put stuff out there to like crowdsource an idea or whatever and like don't reach out to people anymore or just have a conversation. You know, it's has to be like, I don't know, what does everyone think about this? Like, why don't you just ask someone what they think about it? You know, I don't know. Like what's your take on that social aspect of it? Cause I feel like, you know, had you just put something out on Facebook, you would have gotten a whole bunch of advice. It probably wasn't super helpful. And then now you're more confused or frustrated.
Yep. No, I, I mean, so one of the reasons why I even decided to run for city council is because of that exact reason. There's so many people that just think, oh, let's just create a committee over here and they'll make the decision for the people over here that have nothing to do with the people over here. And not even just ask the people over here what they need. And that seems to be what's happening. Even like with businesses, not one person from our city called, said, hey, how can we help you? Hey, are you doing okay? Not anybody. And I called them like crazy. So they knew who I was. So I know that they, you know, I was emailing and doing everything like, hey, what are we gonna do? Hey, is anything gonna come through from the city? Hey, can you help us with this? Hey, we all need help over here. And so that's kind of, that's the biggest thing is like, people just need to call people. You just need to ask. If we wanna fix something, we just need to call and ask how we can help.
I think that's huge. We were talking about, you know, what we're looking at with this podcast in general. And one of the things that came up was the assuming that happens all the time that we assume somebody else is gonna take care of it. We assume somebody else is gonna reach out. We assume that somehow this will be taken care of, whatever it may be. But the reality is that taking action overrides assuming. You know, you can't always assume. You should never really assume.
Yeah. And that's exactly what most people do. Because it's natural. You just assume somebody else will take care of it. Oh, it's kind of a bigger issue. Someone will, someone else will step up and do it.
Like they'll just tell you when it's okay to open. Like if you didn't listen to the guidelines and prepare yourselves accordingly, you wouldn't be ready. You do have to check into things and make sure that, you know, you're doing what you need to do, like not just cause someone told you it was okay.
No, there was, I mean, we watched deed and every single, you know, Wednesday governor interview. Yeah. I screenshotted everything and I had my phone up and yeah, I I was.
What a crazy like situation to be just like staring at your phone, waiting for a weekly press conference to tell you how to run your business, you know?
That's exactly what it was. Watching deed, like, oh, is my business listed? Do I need to open? Okay.
There's so much gray area. I think that, you know, again, a lot of people decided where that fit in for them, you know, to think the one things that, that I've seen with people in their businesses is like, if you didn't decide to adjust, that's where the most people are struggling right now is either the lack of income or, you know, the ability to be ready. I was listening to a podcast this morning that was talking about fear and, you know, how it develops this whole like scarcity mindset. And, you know, just talking about that and replacing it with preparation. Right? Like the people that are gonna ramp up are the people that have been preparing during this time to get going rather than waiting to see what happens. The whole future changes, I think, based on that.
And I, we were watching other states even and things, um, with my husband being from Utah. Utah actually opened the first week in May and trampoline park opened there. So we actually went and visited it. And just to walk in and see what they did and what they were doing and talk to the owners there. And, and just try to figure out, okay, well, this is what they did. Let's kind of try to put some of these things in place. And maybe it'll be enough when we get to open. If we have to only add one more thing, at least we have half of it done.
I think that's, you know, the interesting part about it too. Cause you know, the, when it comes into the PPE that was required, it was like people waited to the last second to figure out, you know, whatever. And then they were like, well, there's no supply until July. We saw a lot of salons in that, you know, predicament where they weren't able now that they could open to open because they didn't have the proper, you know, equipment. So.
Yeah, we pre-planned for that.
I think planning is huge. It sounds like, you know, obviously with a financial background that you've got some, some planning. What from your perspective, you know, like on a personal level, you see all this. You guys did a great job planning. You know, you saw, uh, a gap. I guess is that what you would say in terms of how the city handled and supported businesses and, and that sort of thing? What was your internal like, you know, moment where you're saying, I'm gonna go do something about this. What did that look like?
It was so many different things, I guess, when I think about it. But I waited, um, until the very last day. So June second was the final day to even register your name down to run. And I kept waiting to see if another business owner would step up. Because obviously I'm not a politician. So, um, so I'm a business owner. And so I was, you know, I called, um, everybody on the city council and asked them to their opinion on running and owning a business as well. Just that, you know, if they seen struggles that I was not aware of and being naive about, um, because we do run a business too. I talked to, um, Anna Lisa because she does, she's the only council member who currently runs events and was on council and asked how, you know, if she, if there was any advice, if there was anything I'm not thinking about, there's things I need to be aware of. And no one discouraged me. They all actually encouraged me more and said, no, you should, you should. We need more voices. We need to hear from small businesses. And so I waited another day for someone else to sign up, checked daily to see.
Internal battle like during that time? Like what, what was the question in your head that you were trying to figure out?
Well, uh, to run for city council, you have to, you know, put yourself out there and that's scary. Terrifying. The entire next day after I did it, it was like my chest just felt heavy. Like, oh, what did I just do? How am I gonna figure this all out? You know, and you have opinions on, on things, but when you're running for city council, it's not your opinion that matters. So it's, you know, can I look at things objectively? can I look at things objectively and put myself in the middle?
Yep.
And so I had to just work through all those things in my head, like, okay, do I think I'm even, do I think I'm a good fit?
Sure.
Why am I a good fit?
Yeah.
Why me? Why not somebody else?
Answer for yourself, you know, how do you have that answer for anyone else?
Yeah, and so, you know, I kind of beat myself up, I guess, more than anything, going through all those questions. And then the more I would reach out and I'd I called everyone. I called business owners and asked their advice. I called city council members. I tried to reach out to the mayor. I called
Yeah.
People who had ran in the past for office and lost. I called everyone.
Smart.
Um.
Get the whole shebang.
And, um, the more I talked to somebody, the better I felt about the decision I was making.
Sure.
And so.
Would it have been different if people, you know, told you like, oh, you'll never make a difference?
Maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe. I don't know. I don't know for sure. I didn't get that, so, yeah.
To keep that internal drive, I know, is, is super hard. I think obviously asking for, you know, validation or confirmation, I guess, would be a better word.
Yeah.
That you're in the right direction. I mean, still, you obviously have to do all the work, but
Yep.
What's like your biggest fear in going into that? And obviously you're preparing somehow, but what, what are you doing to, to get past that?
Oh, gosh, I don't even know what my biggest fear is. Just, I think it's that people would think I'm not a good person.
Sure.
I think that's my biggest fear.
Very valid.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I'm a great person.
Yeah.
But everybody is so strong on so many different issues today, um, that, that's, that's my fear.
Sure.
Truly, um, I think I can work through most things and I think I have a level head
Yeah.
To be able to handle most, most objections.
Right.
But yeah, that's a scary thought.
Yeah, for sure. And I think too, you know, we get back to that day and age where these opinions are all out there.
Yeah.
Yet, action is very limited.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and productive action, I think would be the operative word there.
Yeah, and another driver too, um, so some of our staff members, um, we have such a diverse group of staff and I love our staff.
Awesome.
Um, but some of them helped um, organize a lot of the protests and, and different things um, downtown. And it was like seeing them stand up and calling and talking to them and about different things and, and they're like, you know, they even encouraged me to run and it was like, okay. Not just doing it for me anymore. I'm doing it for you guys. I'm doing it for other business owners. So hopefully they'll step up and run.
Yeah.
Next time and
Absolutely.
And kind of for everyone else, so.
I love that, you know, part of the story because the thing about courage is just like everything else, like negativity brings negativity, but I also believe that courage can breed more courage. You know, when you see other people that are, you know, doing the right thing in the right way, you know, a lot of times people feel empowered to also do the same.
Yeah.
You know, there's that social like pressure, I think, you know, that like can work for the good.
Absolutely.
It absolutely can work for the bad. We've obviously seen a lot of things that did not work out well because of that, but I do think that it's one of those things that could breed more courage.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, especially, you know, women in general, when we see other women doing something good or doing something, it's like, oh, I can do that.
Yeah.
I can do that too. And then
Right.
You stand up and do it.
Have you had like strong like women leaders that you like look up to, that you follow, that, you know, kind of drive that encouragement, you know, encourage within yourself?
Um, I see them all over. I guess I don't look at one specifically. I see them everywhere.
Sure.
Um, my grandma is probably my biggest encourager, cause she's just a fighter in general. Um, and she's the one, like her words are basically this, this world isn't for pansies.
Sure.
And so, that's what she would say.
That's a great quote. I love it.
Um, and so I, I live by that. I try to stand up and always
Mm-hmm.
Um, fight for people that don't have voices, I guess. I don't know why, why I do that, but
Sure.
I always have.
Sounds like a very like internal thing.
Yeah, I don't know why, but, yep, me and my sister were just discussing it, cause um, she's the same way.
Mm-hmm.
And I was like, why is it that we always feel like we, it has to be us?
Yeah.
I, neither of us know, but I guess it's just something inside of us.
Hey, it works out well for you.
And now, time for a quick break from the podcast. Ah, yeah. And now, back to the episode.
What type of like advice, you know, would you give to yourself, like as a child, like if you could look back and say like, you know, maybe one area that you struggled in or something that you didn't do, you know, because of something, you know, fear or whatever it is. You know, and you see you look back and say like, man, I wish I would have known this.
Yeah, so many things. I wish I would have, you know, done so many things different, but then again, at the same time, if I wouldn't have done things the way I did in my life, maybe I wouldn't be the person I am today.
That's so true.
So I definitely didn't make all the right choices in life when I was young, for sure.
Yeah.
Um, but I think every single one of them led me to the next venture that I was on and the next one and the next one and
Yep.
And here I am today, so.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, so I, I don't necessarily think I would change anything too much, but
Yeah. I always like say that, you know, those paths, I'm like, my map must just look like a hot mess.
Oh, yeah.
You know, like lots of different turns and I, I totally agree. I don't like to look back and say like, oh, I wouldn't have done this, like it's certainly if certain things weren't done and certain things weren't hard, you know, things right now would definitely be different for sure.
Yeah.
What would you give as, you know, advice or encouragement to someone who's on the fence about like, do I say something? Do I do this? You know, I'm sure someone else will do it.
Oh, follow your heart.
You know?
You know, just stand up, follow your heart, do what you feel is right. If you think that you need to say something and no one is saying it.
Mm-hmm.
Say it.
Yeah, if you think twice about it, you should probably do it, you know?
Yeah, you might take some flak for it and it won't be easy by any means, but, but do it.
Right.
Um, I think one of the, so growing up in Cassin.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one of the things that I try to look back and just like, what has given me courage to like, to do things that are different.
Yeah, right.
And when I was younger, I really loved archery and no women shot archery back then.
Do you have somebody in your family that?
Nope.
Learned, you're just like, I'm gonna go
My friends.
Shoot a bow and arrow.
Just for my friends, um, the guys all did.
Yeah.
But no girls did. And so, um, I started teaching myself
Mm-hmm.
How to do it. And then I took hunter safety classes and, and um, I convinced one of my really good friends to come with me as too. And so we were the only two girls and that ever hunted and spent time outdoors and, and learned archery and um, and I think about that too. And it's like, gosh, you know, at the time to be young and to just do something that no one else was doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think whether it's, it could be anything, but you know, if you have a, something that you wanna do, like don't let your limitations or, you know, just teach yourself.
Yeah, your mind is a powerful tool, for sure. And I think, you know, like I was, my son just learned how to ride a bike. And I was like, how did you learn so quickly? Like, I'm talking, he was like, I'm gonna like practice balancing down the sidewalk and I was working out in my garage and all of a sudden he comes flying down the sidewalk, just pedaling away. And I'm like, wait, I thought we were still not like understanding how to ride a bike, but you know, in his mind, he's just like, ah, there is no option. You know, I will ride this. I'm just, gotta figure out how to do it.
Yeah.
You know, not like, if I can ride a bike, will I ride a bike? You know, it's like, how quick can I get this done, you know?
Yep.
So I love that mindset and it sounds like that's exactly what, you know, you've had is I realize that there's an option, but I don't really consider that as an option for me that I can't get somewhere.
Yep, I think anyone can. I think you just have to put your mind to it and not be afraid, because every single thing that's great in life comes with risk.
Mm-hmm.
There is a chance you'll fall.
Right.
And you probably will fall once and then you'll probably fall again.
Right. Do you think about like, what's the worst that could happen? You know, if, you know, you don't get on city council or, you know, with your business, like did those things ever come into your mind and what do you do to like keep that negativity or ifiness out?
Um, you know, I think, I think the biggest thing that helps me is I've been at the bottom in life.
Sure.
And then, you know, I, I didn't come from a wealthy family and so I've, I've been through struggling before.
Yeah.
And I know today, you know, with my education, I know I can go get a job at any bank and I don't worry about that.
Sure.
So just, you know, will I be the wealthiest person? No, but I'll be okay.
Yeah.
I don't need a lot to be happy. And I think that is what gives me the courage to go and to do riskier things
Sure.
To try, because if you don't try, you won't ever succeed.
Yeah.
You have to just keep trying until
Right.
You, well, till you make it, cause otherwise you only fail if you stop.
Yeah, that's so true.
Um, and I mean, we hit every single hurdle you could imagine for three years with the trampoline park. And I don't think anyone in my family even thought we were actually going to be able to do it. Yeah, I mean, we talked about it and we just kept fighting. We kept fighting and we kept fighting. We kept redirecting.
And that's a long time to keep fighting. I mean, obviously, like you talk about five months in terms of the actual transition.
Yep.
From bought to, you know, but three years of planning and working through obstacle after obstacle. I mean, that you really have to run the course.
Yeah, mentally it's hard. It was, I mean, you'd have be in tears, then you'd be super excited because you finally thought you had something and then nothing again. And, and it was like, okay, start over.
Yeah.
Or this isn't gonna happen unless you do this. Okay, well, how are we gonna make that work?
Right. Right.
And you just, we had to just keep changing
Yeah.
Things, coming up with new ideas. That was the biggest thing.
And it sounds like that's a theme along all of these is what else can we come up with, you know, for what doesn't work?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, and I think the biggest thing is just not stopping.
Yeah.
Don't stop.
Right.
Keep going.
Find another way.
Find a new way, keep going.
Yeah.
And then keep going again.
Yeah.
Cause it will eventually work out.
Yep.
It has to if you don't stop.
I mean statistically, like seriously, like, you know, you could say nine out of 10 times, but still, there is that one time, you know, that it will work.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah, and that's all you need. And you made it.
Exactly. I love that. I love that. Anything else that you wanna talk about that, you know, has really impacted your life in terms of like how you've gotten to where you've gotten so far and, you know, gotten through some really hard stuff?
I think it's just keep going.
Yeah.
I think that's it. Like every single person hits roadblocks, whether it's with an illness, with um, work, losing a job.
Yeah.
Um, housing, you know, anything.